I got yours on.
Okay, Ray, thank you.
I can't read yours.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, this is, uh, which one here?
Famous ones.
Oh, okay. This is the first public hearing for March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Please rise, we'll pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, please be seated. Okay. This public hearing is not going to be held, just so we all know. I'm withdrawing the local law at this time to allow further revision of it as more information has become available. So rather than issue this one and then have to issue another one, it saves money and time. So there will be no public hearing because there's no local law that we're going to talk about. And you'll have more details later on when we get to that part of the meeting. So what I'm going to do is say, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor? Aye. Motion carried, so this is adjourned to next month.
Okay, so you just have to wait now until six ten?
Yeah.
The first one was the search warrant, essentially?
Yeah.
Um, the next one is number two, if you have it in front of you, it's the Cold War veterans. Is the next public hearing at six ten?
We may have five minutes or something.
You do. You have six minutes.
Oh, six minutes, sorry. Watch your line.
Okay, get rid of this. Great. Yeah, so you go with final word, yeah. Was he able to find that information you were looking for?
He was stolen.
Okay, but he thought it was present.
Okay, there's your clock.
Yes, uh-huh, six oh five, yeah.
I didn't know it was on.
And it's accurate, too.
Yeah, okay.
Well, my other one, you know, the battery was going, so it wasn't accurate. The roads really weren't that bad. I mean, I didn't think the storm materialized to...
It was too shit warm.
Is that what it was, yeah? But, I mean, there were predictions at six to eight inches and...
Yeah, it didn't even stick to my driveway.
Yeah, no, yeah.
But the kids were home all day.
I know, fun, fun.
Kind of funny work is this?
What's that?
A little paste and some stick here.
I don't know, I'm not sure. Who's this on?
Costco.
Just for the audience, in case you're wondering why we're just sitting here.
I think that Kimberly combined...
We're just waiting for two ten so we can start the...
Sometimes we have two or three of them, and she combines them into one.
Public hearing on the Cold War veterans exemption. The first one, which was zoning administrators authority obtaining a search warrant, was withdrawn for discussion or public hearing. It's going to be held next month.
Remembering all these laws, I'm not calling proposed number, I'm just calling proposed law because I've had someone say, well, that was number one, but, you know. So I'm not going to actually give them a number until we approve it.
Okay, two minutes.
Yeah, six oh eight.
For the TV community, just an update so you know what's going on. We withdrew the zoning administrator's authority to obtain a search warrant, public hearing. It'll be presented next month. So we're just waiting for six ten so we can start the time period for the Cold War veterans exemption.
Ray, you might need to mic close a bit, you're not coming out real loud.
No?
No, I'm not very loud. I can hear you, but I don't know about...
Well, when, when the microphone broadcasts down here, we get a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I heard that.
Yeah.
So as long as they can hear on the, the channel up there.
Yeah.
Go home and watch, you can hear it better.
I don't know who's up there. Up there, I don't know.
Jerry.
Jerry, okay.
Eating my supper. What are you, Ellen, Elliot supposedly put something in the file folder?
Elliot's putting things in my folder?
Elliot, there was nothing in my folder. Nothing in any of the folders on what we discussed.
It's in the thing.
Is it here?
Yeah.
Oh.
Should be.
Okay, because I looked in all the folders.
No, no, it should be in here.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe it's in here. If not, we can yell at Carol.
Let's see. It's in the file. It's in six ten.
At six ten, we're going to call the next public hearing to order for March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Please rise, we pledge the flag again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Town clerk will read the legal notice.
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, one two one five Center Road, Reinbeck, in the town of Clinton, New York, at six ten P. M. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law number two, that'll change, of eighteen entitled, Amendment to Chapter two ten dash twenty-seven B. of the town code extending the time period for the Cold War veterans exemption pursuant to Article sixteen of the New York Town Law. This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Town Clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is open concerning the adoption of this proposed local law. Uh, when you come up, please talk into the microphone over there and give us your name and your street so that we can put it in the record and duly record your comments. If anybody has some, don't all rush at one time.
Russ Tompkins, Center Road, this may come as a surprise to the board, but I'm actually in favor of something. And I think that any veteran should be entitled this exemption. There's not as many as there used to be, but I strongly support it, and I hope you all will, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll wait, uh, two, three minutes in case somebody else comes rushing to the door.
Carol, Carol, I think you attached the wrong one by mistake.
I have it.
At least my copy, I don't know.
I have them in the back.
It's all right, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
As long as other people's, I think are okay. I think it's just mine.
Do they want to look at it? Do you want to look at it now? I have them in the back, do you want to look at it?
It's okay.
Want to look at my originals? I have it in front of me, yeah.
If you have it, I'll take it and look at it for a minute, sure, I'll get back to you.
This is the one.
Oh, thank you, Carol.
It's not attached to your minutes, so if you want. And that's for the one we're doing. Right? Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, of course. Six fourteen, the next one's at six twenty.
Okay. Just so the TV audience knows what's happening, we've opened up the public hearing on the extending the time period for the Cold War veteran exemption. This is for assessments and taxes. We're just waiting to see if anybody else is coming or wants to speak to the issue. The next one will start at six twenty, and that'll be the next public hearing. So we're just waiting to see, you never know.
Six fifteen?
Six fifteen. I guess nobody else is coming. Seeing no more people rushing into the door, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second? You got a second?
You're going to adjourn, or are you just closing?
Yes, I'm...
She's going to close it.
It's going to be adjourned that first time.
That's what it says. Are you coming to talk about the veterans exemption, lady?
No, she's, um, no.
Oh, I can't say.
Hi, Jackie, she's for the regular ones.
Oh, okay. Okay. I can't tell who's all what.
You can read them all.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried, so this public hearing is closed. So at six twenty, we'll start with the last public hearing.
How would you think of what date we could hit? Wait, let me know, like, maybe next week? Weather permitted.
For the TV audience, we're just making mention, we're on hold, wait until six twenty so we can open the next public hearing on the prohibition on elected municipal officers holding paid positions within, with the town.
Michael gets actually late, so I put it there. It shouldn't, couldn't get it.
I just wanted to see if it was for the exception.
Yeah. Right, right. Very poetic. Six twenty.
Okay, at six twenty, start for the last public hearing. Please rise and we'll pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, at this time, the town clerk will read the legal notice.
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, one two one five Center Road, Reinbeck, in the town of Clinton, New York, at six twenty P. M. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law of two thousand and eighteen entitled, prohibition on elected municipal officers holding paid positions with the town pursuant to Article sixteen of the New York Town Law. This local law shall be filed with the Secretary of State and take effect on January one, two thousand and nineteen. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town Clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Thank you. At this time, I open up the public hearing concerning the adoption of this proposed local law. When you want to comment, you come up to the front, talk into the microphone, to the town board, and, uh, give us your name and the street you live on. So who wants to be first? Russ?
So you don't... Russ Tompkins, Center Road. So you don't think I lost my mind, this one I'm against. In my opinion, we don't need this law. People are hired for salary positions with the approval of, I believe, the board. A person holding an elected position could be the best candidate for another paid position. There's no need to put potential block in that way, in the way. They are part-time positions, and I don't see how they interfere with each other. It seems to me, from attending town board meetings, that there's way too much effort being put into enacting new and mostly unneeded laws. I think we need to just do the normal business that comes up routine and back off more legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, anybody else? Denise?
Denise Beery, Hollow Road, Town of Clinton. Well, obviously, I just don't see the benefit to the town for this law. I'm very good at public speaking, so forgive me, I just have to get my thoughts together. It seems that if you have the, the ability to waive it at will and override it, then it seems like it's not a law really at all, you know? And if you're going to be able to waive one position over other positions, because we have multiple positions in the town that are elected positions and are also appointed positions in the town, I don't see how you don't waive all of them or waive none of them, because then you're just picking and choosing. And then you're just keeping and getting in the way of the elected process. I mean, what better thing? We have an open election for the position, it should be open. And I just don't, I don't see the benefit at all to the town to, to this. There's no impropriety, except you're proposing, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did you want to say something? Sure, hop up.
Bernadette Duquette from West Cookingham Road. Coming from an H R background, I would be normally in favor of this particular law because it negates the impression of nepotism or favoritism when applying it to multiple people getting multiple jobs. There is some question about the fact that you can override it, and again, my concern would be that the perception is that you're overriding it for people that are in a position of familial or that type of a, of a scenario. So I would caution that that would be very misleading, but the principle of not, of not allowing somebody to have multiple positions from an H R standpoint is favorable.
I'd like to clarify the overriding reason, at least from my point of view, and that is, mid-year, someone leaves the position, okay? We look for candidates, there may not be any outside of the organization that would give us the ability to override it, and if someone is interested within the organization, we could at least appoint somebody. It's a need kind of thing versus the nepotism thing or something, because we do agree that nepotism is something we don't want to be a part of, but that's really the rationale for overriding something like that. Everyone agree with that?
Yeah, this is just really the public discussion part, so...
Yeah, this is comments, we shouldn't be making a big discussion at this point.
We can discuss it at the time, we can go for...
Tell us what they think about it.
All right, sorry about that, but...
Yeah. We, we'll have it when we get to the local law.
All right, okay, fine.
Okay.
Scott Duquette, West Cookingham. This is really more of a question that maybe will come up in the discussion, just to how, how these job opportunities are being, you know, advertised to the public to make sure, you know, because I think that there could be a benefit to, you know, offering jobs to other people in the community if, if such, if, if appropriate, and making sure that, you know, jobs don't just get passed around between elected officials without an opportunity for other people to be involved. So I'm just curious what the process is of getting those publicized so that other applicants could, could offer up their, you know, resume. Thank you.
Comment? In the public law, uh, public hearing? Do you have a comment, lady?
If she wants to.
Oh, no, well, I'm just, she just came late, and I didn't want to miss her.
I don't think I'm talking to my husband. Okay.
Any more comments? Going once. Going twice. Okay, then I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, motion carried. So we're done with the public hearing. Now we'll move, get ready.
Three minutes.
We've got three minutes before we hit the regular town board meeting.
So many papers back there, I labeled them so people can know if they were, they were getting.
So parents, and, uh, he was coming.
You could stay in the space, sit there and say he's coming.
Did you even talk about anything?
No, no. I don't know if he got it, but he's, uh, he's getting it.
That was in the text.
Yeah. Uh, here and there, but nothing too major.
You know, I've read it over, like, so many times, it's all just mush in my brain. But I should have known, for sure. Okay, you have six thirty, Ray.
Okay.
You know, when you make twenty, two people show up, and you throw them away. When you make ten, twenty people show up. It's human nature.
Okay, we're going to start so we keep on sort of schedule. It's a regular starting time. So please rise and we'll pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, please be seated. We're going to approve two sets of minutes that occurred last month. The first one is motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen public hearing on the timber law, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next one is the regular town board meeting. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular town board meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Now, does anybody want to talk in the first public session? Okay, then we'll open it, just let me open it, I just want to be sure. I make a motion, open the meeting to the public discussion. I make a motion to open the meeting to the public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. At the discussion or comments at the public hearing, you come up to the microphone, talk into the audience, to the board up here, give your name and your, where you live. That's all.
Hi, my name is Jackie Reynolds. I live in the town of Mylan, on Row Road in Mylan. I represent the Teconic Little League and I've been a board member probably for twenty years for Teconic. And I came to ask the board for Clinton to consider having banners on the outfield fences at Friends Field. And I brought you a couple pictures to show you what they are so that you'd have a visual image of what we're...
That was, that was attached to the proposal.
Have you seen this yet?
I gave it to everybody.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure you had that available to you. And I have an example. This is a real sleepwalk. This is currently being used in Stamfordville on Kelly Field. They're three by five, vinyl. They're held to the fence.
Turn it just a little so the camera can see it too.
They're put up in April and they're taken down at the end of October. Because that covers spring season, fall stars, and then fall baseball. And one of the benefits to the league that we have discovered is, is that we try to keep our registration rates very low. And having people who are sponsors from the community helps us keep the registration rates for our kids as low as possible so that it's something that's more affordable to people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else talking in the public session on topics on the agenda?
Hi, this is Scott Duquette, West Cookingham. Regarding the discussion on banning firearms in town buildings, town complexes, and parks, I just wanted to express that I'm in favor of banning guns from these public spaces. I think that's a very reasonable request from the community and appropriate given the climate going on right now in our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hop up.
I'm Judy Canham. I live on Longview Road. And I would also like to speak up in favor of, I'm not sure if today is just a discussion about the banning of the firearms in the town property areas. Again, I also believe this is a reasonable request. This is the place where community members of all ages come to engage in social types of activities. And I think anything we can do to preserve and promote the safety of those areas for full participation by our full community, I think this is something that would contribute to that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mike Duquette from West Cookingham. I have the same sentiments. The idea of children being in a library, this has nothing to do with Second Amendment rights. It has to do with public safety. Have your guns, protect your home and whatnot. But there needs to be places where children can feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bernadette Duquette from West Cookingham. I again also want to discuss the banning of guns in the town complexes, parks, and that type of thing. And primarily, it is for safety, for feeling, if nothing else. I know that there's, you can never say that somebody is or isn't going to do something. I know that that's one of the big arguments. However, where I feel that there is a law, I respect the laws, even though some do not. I want to be able to say that I have that at least on my side and that I can feel safe with grandchildren, children, and, and my community. I think that asking for this is a small effort in that feeling of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further comments coming, I make a motion to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next thing is supervisors' comments. During the Easter holiday, the town offices, highway department, court office, and court will be closed on Good Friday and Saturday, March thirtieth and thirty-first respectively. The library will be open as usual on both days. The recycling center will be open as usual on Saturday, March thirty-first, from eight AM to noon. We received a letter from the Duchess County Board of Elections seeking election inspectors for the three elections this year. Training will be required and you will receive, receive thirty-five dollars pay for training. Election day pay is two hundred and fifty dollars for a five-thirty in the morning to nine-thirty at nine workday. Call Amy Tanner at eight-four-five-four-eight-six-two-four-seven-four for questions or to apply. This information will be posted in the town hall bulletin board, which is in the back, and the library, so you don't have to write everything if you missed it.
I put it on the web, too.
And the web, too, she said. The 2017 AUD, which is like a business annual report, but that's a governmental annual report, extension was requested and granted. That's all I have in my section, so we'll start off with reports, planning.
Planning board met on February twentieth. There were four items, five items on the, on the agenda. A, an applicant on Camp Drive who applied for a variance to build a deck, required relief from rear, rear and side, side yard setback reduction. Was granted approval, recommendation to the zoning board of appeals with the addition of a variance to increase the lot coverage as well. That same applicant also applying for a permit to construct the deck within a hundred feet of Long Pond. And that, that application was also reviewed and the request was granted, assuming the variance request granted by the ZBA. Second applicant on Fourth Avenue, also an area variance for reductions in the front side and rear yard setback as well as increase in building coverage. This is for a pre-existing home that had been expanded considerably several years ago. Board issued a conditional recommendation and also sent the applicant onto the ZBA. Third application for an accessory dwelling on Coyote Ridge Road. No action was taken there, but discussion, board declared lead agency, set a public hearing date for April third. And the last item on the agenda for an applicant on Creek Road who had come in for a, actually, I'm sorry, the next to last application. A young lady who came in for, with a request for a demolition permit and after meeting with several people from the historical society, decided rather than demolishing the entire structure, which turns out to date back about two hundred years, she came up with an alternative plan to save the old portion of the house, remove the portion that is not salvageable, and work with, work with the historic part of the structure. The approval was granted on that basis. And the final application was for a two-lot subdivision on Nine Partners Road. Sketch plan approval was granted. An escrow account was established. And clearly, the applicant will be back for preliminary approval after the town engineer and highway superintendent have reviewed the application. Meeting on March sixth was canceled because of the power outage. Whoa, that's the report.
Okay, thank you. Next one. See what you can do next time.
Wow, that was exciting.
You got ZBA.
ZBA, okay. February twenty-second, one applicant on the agenda from Field Road, requesting an area variance to reduce side yard setback for an addition onto an existing house. Led the discussion about the application. There were some issues with the, with the proposal and with the site plan. The ZBA requested that the applicant do more work on the application and, and his, his engineer should fine tune the site plan. Public hearing has remained open and no further action was taken.
Thank you. Next one. CAC, Conservation Advisory Committee.
The CAC met on February fourteenth. There was some discussion about the recent community choice aggregation proposal in front of the town board. Concerns were raised around the table about these programs not turning out to be more expensive than they were initially purported to be. It's more anecdotal than evidence, but I wanted to bring it up. The CAC is also starting to plan for the community, Climate Smart Community Program. And one of the first things they're talking about is doing an inventory of energy use for the town. I also attended with Barbara Mansell and Jean McAvoy the EMC CAC Roundtable at Cornell Cooperative Extension. EMC is the Environmental Management Council for the county. And CACs throughout the county met. It was a really great meeting. All the CACs were able to discuss things that they've learned throughout the last year with each other and share ideas. Barbara Mansell got up and talked about the accomplishments of, of our CAC over the last year. And we saw two presentations, one on Climate Smart Communities and one on Clean Energy Communities. One of the presenters was Europa, Europa McGovern from the Hudson Valley Regional Council. And she's going to be attending the CAC meeting tomorrow to discuss with our CAC steps moving forward with the Climate Smart Communities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Recreation Committee.
The Recreation Committee met on February twenty-sixth. We had started planning out the, the activities in the park. We re, redefined the fees for the year. I don't have copies for everyone. I'll give Carol one and I'll put them in your mail folder as well. For the pavilion fees, we have a hundred and fifty dollars for residents, two hundred and fifty for non-residents, three hundred and fifty for organizations, and seven hundred dollars for commercial rentals. Although some people might think they're exorbitant, when we look at local communities, they don't offer as much as we do and their fees are much higher, just as a point of reference. The summer camp will be starting. That'll be grades K through five. The fees for that, again, for children in the residence, resident children would be seventy-five dollars and a hundred and seventy-five dollars for non-residents. The camps will start on July ninth through thirteenth and July sixteenth through the twentieth. And they'll all be put on the web, right, Carol?
Sure.
Eventually? And then, and then August sixth through the tenth and August thirteenth through the seventeenth. We're in the process of working with lifeguards. And lifeguards will work with Denise, race secretary, to fill out employment papers, et cetera. The park will open Memorial Day weekend for swimming. The process for summer camp basketball leagues is being examined right now. We hope to have that by the next meeting. New equipment is needed for Fran Mark Park and we'll, we'll talk about that in the future. Merry-go-round lifeguard chair and an AED equipment. Mulch, clay, sand, the typical things to get the park ready. Dan is working, Dan Harkenrider is, who's the director of recreation, is working with Darren Tompkins to get all that done. And we need, we're going to redo signs for the park. It's been a lot of confusion this year with the park being open, the park being closed, the gate being open. The park will be open at April sixteenth through October thirty-first. And that's, and it closes at dusk. And the park closes on November second and opens April fifteenth. With the advent of the basketball court on nice days in the middle of the winter, the guys want to go down and play basketball. And there's a problem because they think the park should be open. We're going to have to address that. We can't leave the park open in the winter because there's all kinds of liabilities. We don't plow, we don't maintain it. There's ice this year. It's been really bad. And we don't want anyone getting hurt. So you'll hear more from us, but there will be new signs put up that'll kind of reinforce the things that we need to do and give people a reference if they need, they have questions. That's the end of report.
Thank you. Next one is building inspector. That's you.
Is that me?
Yep.
Again, building, sorry. Building permits issued, there were five during this period. Number of COs and CCs were six. The number of title searches were five. The building inspector logged a hundred and twenty-three miles in the area. The cost of construction for this period is three hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The lion's share of that is a, hold on a second. New residence on Sixth Grissom Hill Road. And that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar value.
Thank you.
End of report.
Zoning administrator.
Six items on the zoning administrator's report this month. An ongoing issue on Fullkill Road. Neighbors complaining about property with junk cars and debris on it. The property owner has been reluctant to remedy the situation. So the zoning officer is pursuing legal action in terms of a cease and desist order violation. Problem, again, an ongoing issue on Deer Ridge Drive having to do with neighbors' concerns with a noisy muffler. State police were alerted, came out, investigated. State police from two different barracks came out, evaluated the situation and found no, no legal violation. A situation on Center Road with bright lights at night affecting road traffic, drivers passing by. Homeowner will be contacted to, to reduce the lighting and also redirect it so that it does not shine onto Center Road. An issue that's come up several times apparently having to do with campers being parked in driveways, occupied campers and being left there for extended periods of time. The zoning administrator is looking into it. The zoning law allows for campers in driveways to be occupied no more than thirty days in one calendar year. And the last item on his, on his, his report is a property owner on Amieville Road who applied for a permit to put in a solar installation. It was denied because it exceeded the peak power rating allowed by the, by our zoning law. Zoning law and the applicant is appealing this denial and will take it, take his case to the zoning board of appeals. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next one is highway.
Needless to say, the highway department's been very busy with the last few storms we've had. They've sanded twenty-five times during the winter storms, not counting today. Plowed eight times during the snowstorms themselves. Cleared, cleaned, of course, the maintenance on the truck is continuous when they're doing this kind of thing. They cleared sixty-two trees that were downed during the storm on March, March second and March seventh. And again, trying to open ditches so that we have good drainage, et cetera. And a lot of potholes were also addressed. End of report.
Thank you. Scenic and Historic Road.
No action and no activity and no meeting this month.
Okay, library report.
The library trustees met last night. Happy to report that circulation numbers have continued to increase and are up fairly significantly from last year, actually. The trustees discussed the amendment to the lease, which is on the agenda for tonight. They are in agreement with us, are on the lease and ready to sign it. And an important issue that the library trustees wanted to highlight is the proposed four percent budget cut to library funding and the four... library funding and the forty percent cut to the construction aid program in the New York State budget, it's going to leave library funding at the same level that it was in the year two thousand, so the trustees are encouraging everyone to take a few minutes, visit NYLA.org where you can sign onto a letter to state legislators encouraging them to restore equitable funding for our libraries, end of report.
Thank you. Altase, which was the new name for the company Cable Vision, you all familiar with?
In an email on February fourteenth, we were notified that Starz and Starz Encore channels have returned to all packages that were, they were previously available on at no extra cost and the twenty seventeen second half franchise fee in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars was paid to the town.
Thank you, zoning revision.
So we didn't have a meeting subject to tonight's discussion, I guess, of the contract for Neil Wilson, so we'll delay until that.
The next one is the proposed transmission lines that go through the Town of Clinton, no news, so we're not having the workshop after this town board meeting that we used to have a year ago, we're still waiting what's going to happen from Albany, just in case you don't know, it's the power lines over there that they're talking about, not the ones back here by Omega, the ones behind there. Any other reports?
I didn't see in the packet here, Ray, but typically we announce so that people know that there's a fire ban, so the state's ban on open fires is from March fifteenth through...
Oh yeah, that's...
Right, but we usually announce it so that people know, so it's, it's March fifteenth for, what's the ending?
May sixteenth.
Is it May fifteenth?
Something there, yeah.
May sixteenth, so as of the fifteenth, no more burning until May sixteenth, so just so everybody knows and we used to, we used to issue the permits for burning, we don't do that in the last eight years or so, so it's all regulated by the state now.
Yep. Okay, we'll go into old business, first item of discussion is local law for demolishing, demolition delay of historic buildings.
These are old buildings, so I guess it's old business, right?
Yeah.
Well, we had a, let's say a spirited discussion last time about the pros and cons and people who were here representing, it was a group of citizens actually, they were on their own, they weren't representing any particular organization, but they are forming a group, a committee to look into the matter, investigate what can be done or can't be done, it turns out that there is a section of our zoning law which pertains to this, to this very topic, having to do with historic district and landmark protection, which is actually pretty strong, although it's, to my knowledge at least and from my, my years on the planning board, I don't recall that it was ever enforced, but it is there and it does exist, so that may be a good jumping off point rather than creating a new law, something that may or may not be needed, work with, essentially work within the framework of the existing law. So there is a committee of interested people getting together to work on this as, without any kind of official status within the town, but just as interested, interested parties and my wife is involved with this group and she and Nancy had a exchange of emails where Nancy raised a number of questions, those were sent to the board here, I don't, people saw them and responded, several people I know responded, so presumably you would have, you would have seen it and again, there are many issues to be considered and over the course of the next couple of months, we'll be hearing more about what the issues are and what is, what to do about them, so that's basically where it stands at the moment.
Okay, so do you want to put it on for next month again or?
Sure, I mean if anybody has any input to that exchange of emails, comments, suggestions, send them on.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is discussion on Sun Energy's proposal for providing community electricity, okay, this is a little complicated, but we will try to make it simple. The Sun Energy Company acts like an independent insurance broker who seeks out the best policy for a customer, we're all familiar with that process, they canceled their discussions with the town due to redoing their business plans, some rules came up and the fifty, a thirty percent tariff on solar panels and all has disturbed their whole financial basis that they were working on. The New York State Association of Towns and Conference of Mayors have announced a new municipal aggregation and community choice aggregation program called New York Municipal Energy Program operated by Good Energy, that's the name of the company, which appears to be very similar to Sun and Energy's program, both governmental facilities and community residents are eligible to sign up and save. At the Association of the Towns Annual Meeting, they gave a presentation which showed them being a nationwide business with many users as residents, businesses and governments, governments meaning local, county and state, they even have a whole state someplace. To move the process forward, I'd like to have them do an analysis of the costs for the town's electrical usage and the potential savings and then schedule a workshop later to see the results and discuss the program details and process. We will then make a decision later to become a partner with New York, with this New York Municipal Energy Program, so we're just trying to gather information, we're not signing up, but we gotta give them some information, you know, our electric bill numbers and all that so they can do an analysis and come back with something specific because they, without specifics, we can't move ahead. So I was going to make a motion to authorize me to sign the letter and give them the information so that we could move ahead and whenever they come back, we'll figure out when to schedule a workshop.
Do you really need to have a motion to have someone review our electric bill?
Well, they wanted me to sign the letter with information, so I'm just asking for it, okay, so I make a motion at the town...
Ray, just a quick question, do we know anybody who's involved with these folks or these guys are new, other towns who have worked with them?
No one, they're talking to several towns in Duchess County, they've gotten about three of them out in the western part of the state that they've started to deal with, but it's going to take probably eight to ten months to get enough people collected together so that they can physically go out and get some more realistic bids, so that's what they're looking for right now, so they're just trying to put it together. There are some towns in Duchess County that are also looking at it just like we are, but you know, haven't signed up or done anything to say, you know, it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, so I'm just looking at this in this respect, so I make, I make the motion that the town board authorizes a town supervisor to sign the letter for electric usage analysis and provide their requested information, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And I'll give you an update next month. Okay, so that's that one. Zoning Neil Wilson thing, contract.
Well, this was the issue that Dean was referring to earlier, Neil Wilson, just to review quickly, has changed jobs and we asked for a new letter of agreement to govern his consulting work as part of the zoning revision, he'll no longer be working as a general consultant to the town, but he would like to continue working with us on the zoning revision which is hopefully almost done. Neil drafted a letter, the town attorney reviewed it, Ray reviewed it, requested some changes.
It's okay.
It's okay, Neil made the changes and so basically all we need to do is approve it, he will then clean it up, put it on letterhead, send it, we'll sign it and then we can go back to our business. So I would simply make a motion that the town board, be it resolved, town board approves the contract with Neil Wilson for legal services related to the zoning amendment stated March second, two thousand eighteen at the rate stated and authorize the supervisor to sign the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, to add on to the conversation that I know that you had, I also called up Morse Associates and talked to Pete Sotero and he said that it would definitely be in our best interest to keep Neil both in time and money, just because it is so close to the end that someone else coming in would just cost that much more to catch up the speed, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the next one is approval of local law on search warrant. Yeah, I took that off as being a public hearing earlier, the current zoning law implies the zoning administrator has more search abilities than are legally available to him, that's why we were doing the local law. This local law clarifies his ability to do a legal search and provides the process, the current proposed law is being withdrawn at this time to allow more time for research, there's a couple nuances in it, about three sentences that may have to be changed, but we want to be sure we're right, rather than passing a law and then passing another one to rescind the previous one, so that's what's happening there, so that, that's another item for next month. Okay, the next one is the local law on Cold War Veterans Extensions, New York State just approved the local law process to change the ten-year limit for the Cold War Veteran exemption to unlimited, in other words, there's no end date. This must be approved by April tenth to be effective for two thousand eighteen, there are three veterans that would lose this exemption in two thousand eighteen if not passed quickly today, which we didn't have any real opposition at the public hearing, so I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved, that the town board approve resolution of two thousand eighteen adopting local law of two thousand eighteen entitled Amendment to Chapter two hundred and ten dash twenty-seven B of the Town Code extending the period, time period for the Cold War Veterans Exemption, a copy of which is attached here too and made a part of this resolution and that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of State of New York, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is local law on ethics, Mike, Michael?
So as was discussed both in the public hearing and prior meeting, the law was presented as a way to avoid ethical issues, I mean, we all know that New York has a lot of problems when it comes to corruption, in fact, just recently, well, even today, someone was charged with three felony accounts or sentenced with three felony accounts and last week someone was charged with stealing money from a local town. So while in its, in its presence of our town, it may not be a problem at this point in time, I think it's a good ethical standard to say that we're above it all. The problem with people and as Bernadette mentioned earlier as far as an HR process, it's a good practice not to have people having multiple hands in multiple positions because it could potentially have a problem, it also provides an opportunity for other people to participate within the town as Michael brought up and also even your email earlier today Elliot in regards to someone having both the position in the zoning administrator and the bar would give people more opportunity as well. So those are all merits that also kind of lead into this particular law in that in particular, the town board cannot serve as any other paid position in the town and I propose that any elected official should not serve in any other paid position within the town. It does provide that caveat that someone, I think it was Bernadette also, that mentioned as to why would you give someone the exemption, we are a small town and every now and then we do come into a situation where we can't fill a vacancy, this would give us an opportunity to do that, I do not foresee wanting to do it, but if we did have no other candidates, I think we have to give ourselves the opportunity to fill the vacancy as we just did with the resignation of the previous assessor, I mean, tax collector, so we do have to have those possibilities or we would be facing a lot of problems. So that being said, I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved, resolution number of two thousand eighteen adopting local law of two thousand eighteen entitled Prohibition of Elected Municipal Officers Holding Paid Positions Within the Town, a copy of which is attached here too and made part of this resolution and that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law into the minutes of the meeting and give the due date of the adoption of the local law to the Secretary of State of New York and be it further resolved that the local law shall become effective on January first, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a comment, oh, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I've had a discussion with a few individuals in the town and it's, we're not, we're not accusing anyone of any misconduct or anything else, but it's almost like if you have to talk about it, then you need to fix it, you know, and the question comes up, you know, that we're a small town, someone brought up the, the, how do we advertise for positions and so on, maybe we need to beef that up and maybe we, because I gotta believe there's people out there that would be willing to take jobs in the town, but for some reason, it's just not happening, so I just wanted to clarify, this is not meant as a personal thing against anyone, but it's just a good practice and it's something I think we need to, to address.
Okay, my comments are slightly different, I don't support this thing, never have and a couple reasons, one, the town board appoints people to jobs, we don't appoint people to elections, you, the community, elects the people, you, the community decide who runs for these elected positions, not the town board, so whoever you pick at the election ballot is the person that is that job, whether it be tax collector, town clerk, supervisor, doesn't matter what it is, it's your votes, okay, that do that thing, we at the board approve all the other jobs, so why do I need a law to tell me that I can't appoint someone or cannot, or cannot appoint someone in a job which they're fully qualified and there's a vacancy and we want to fill it, if nobody wants to come forth, fine, but you know, I don't need a law to do that. Additionally, there has been a great expense on developing this law, both from attorney's fees and paperwork, legal notices and stuff like that, it's important to know that these things are not free, they, a lot of attorney time is spent researching, looking at this nuance, talking to the board member who wants a particular local law, some are short, some are big and very complicated, even though the law is only about eight sentences, it's not very big, it's very complicated and looking and researching to make sure it has all the nuances and everything else covered, so I don't support having to enact something that we control how we're doing it and then we got to worry about can we pass a resolution on a timely basis or call a special meeting so we can call, have everybody come together and vote on it to do a resolution to exempt theirself from the law in the process of time, okay? Things happen quick in town, it's hard to get all five of us together, we try, we do it generally quite successfully, but I see no basis or benefit of having the law in streamlining government or anything else and I see no basis in the law being needed to concern ourselves with theft of money. The town... The town board members, these four, okay, not me, these four, annually audit the books of all the positions that they're talking about. Whether it be the supervisor, because I have the big books with all the numbers in, the town clerk, the court clerks, or the tax collector. Each one audits those books every spring or every winter. And, you know, that's the control that we have over it. And if they feel there's a problem, we can address it right then and there. So I see no benefit of the law other than a person's desire to have a law, okay? Whether it's meaningful or not is immaterial, they just want the law. So that's my comment, so I vote no against it.
Well, two, two extra comments. To you, the time that it would take to reappoint somebody and approve an exemption would be the same time to actually approving them for the position to begin with, so it would be no extra time. And as far as the audit goes, while we do audit, we're not auditors. If someone wanted to trick us, we could easily be tricked. So unless we're willing to pay for a certified public accountant, that's the only way to catch it. Just like the other one of the clerk who stole money or accused of stealing money. Didn't get caught for many years until the state auditor, who is a CPA, came in and audited. So I wouldn't rest on the fact of let's wait until we have a problem to have a problem.
If you want an audit, we've done these audits, I've had them done before where we needed them by, by grants and stuff like that. You're talking an extra five to ten thousand dollars for an audit of the town. And that's not doing a complete audit, that's doing a specialized kind of audit. The big audits are about fifteen, twenty thousand.
Did we have, did the state audit us a year or two ago?
No.
What was that audit that was done? People from the state were here.
They did a mini, they did a mini audit. And they found that all of our numbers were in good check. And so they checked us off their list and moved on to the next town.
I don't, I don't think it's a surprise that I was probably the most on the fence about this. I've gone back and forth quite a bit and I've seen both sides. Last night I decided that I wanted to go through and see how many positions this is going to affect. And there were three that I could find in the budget. One is we have an elected supervisor who is our budget officer. Who again, it gets paid extra for that, so we'd have to pass a waiver for it. The other is our town clerk who's elected and is also the vital statistics registrar.
Well, technically, we already need to exempt them because they're already, that, this law already exists for us. This would just add in anyone extra.
And that brings me to my point, that I feel like, and I know you're saying that it's not true, but I feel like it's targeting one individual. And I just don't feel good with it. It just doesn't feel right. I feel like we can make, you know, it's, it's on the town board to properly post and advertise for jobs. And we haven't done that. In the three months I've been here, we've had the emergency tax collector. We've had Morrison Associates, which we didn't go searching for anybody, but we had, we needed somebody because there was an emergency on the planning board. And now we're talking about taking somebody off the Board of Assessment Review so they can go on to another board.
And we didn't take them off.
I know, but the discussion is being had. So I just feel like we need to do a better job of planning for these things, understanding when they're coming up. And that's on all of us.
There's, there's actually three positions that this would affect. So it's not just one person. The only ones that the Town Code automatically covers is each one of the council and the supervisor. That's it. So every other elected position would be subject to this.
I, you know, I suggest we table this until the next meeting and maybe we talk, maybe we go into some kind of executive session and hash this out.
Not topic of the executive session.
No, can't do that?
Nope.
You have a motion and a second, you have to take it.
Okay.
We got to take a look.
We vote.
Yeah, any more comments?
No.
Okay, we'll vote, roll call, Nancy?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
Ray?
Nay.
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 Nay. Pat fails. Okay, off to the next item. Discuss trash pickup in wreck parks. Remember, we were trying to find out what's happening.
Yeah, did Dan get back with you on that? No, there is, there's an error in their billing. So we're working on that. I thought he had gotten back with you on that.
No.
Okay, well, we'll have it fixed. That should not be a three hundred dollar bill.
I understand.
Especially for that park.
That's why I was excited last time.
Yeah, well, I was a little excited too, so that will be fixed.
Okay, the, Elliot, you got the window thing.
Well, this is a, a housekeeping item that's been hanging fire for, I don't know, not quite a year, but since last summer. There's a broken window over in the assessor's office, which I think was caused lawnmower kicking up a, kicking up a rock or some such thing. And I think it's time, basically, that we should simply allot five hundred dollars to get it fixed. We had a similar situation with the town clerk and went to Hobson, oh, what was it, two years ago? And I think the bill was four hundred and twenty dollars. And I can't imagine it's going to be significantly different, so I would simply request that we go up to five hundred dollars.
No, before you make the motion.
Yes.
We did get a window made. We had Williams come down here and inspect the window.
Okay.
And they ordered the window, it came in.
Okay.
But it wasn't the right model. They said it was a Marvin or a Pella. I, you know, they all look alike to me, these plastic windows with the bars in them and all.
Right.
So we got Marvin and Pella coming back to redo it right now, to do the thing. They, they made the window and they gave it to us and we couldn't put it in. And they're taking it back, it's not costing us anything. So, you know, you wanna?
So wait a month.
Fine, okay.
So I just say.
As long as, as long as something's happening.
Yeah.
Because it seems like a really small thing to be talking about.
Yeah.
Almost a year after it happens.
It's a thermal pane window, so just the outside is broken, so.
Right.
I'm just saying it's not.
Okay, let's see what happens.
Heating or causing the heat to escape from the room.
Carry it over to next month and we'll see if it hap, we'll see what happens.
Okay, next one is new business. We normally do a Parkinson's Awareness Month proclamation. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approve resolution of twenty eighteen naming April as Worldwide Parkinson Awareness Month. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, the firearm banning?
Okay, well, this is an issue that's come up a few times. This is really at this point only for discussion and nothing, nothing more than that. But if you look in your package, you'll see that there is a draft of a short resolution, which I worked on and with, with the town attorney. Basically, and I'd like people to review it and comment on it between now and the time of the next meeting, the, the, the idea is to take a law that is already part of our town code and simply expand it so that it covers not only parks, but also what we're referring to as town-owned property, which is basically the town hall complex, for all intents and purposes. It's a list of prohibited activities. So it doesn't only include firearms, it includes other kinds of weapons. It includes littering, it includes defacing private property, it includes on and on and on. There are, I think, a list of twenty or twenty-two prohibited activities. So what I would like to ask the board to do is to review that, consider the pros and cons. Let's have a discussion between now and then. And if we can get our act together, we can have something written and in front of the public a month from now. Set a date for a public hearing, have that in May, depending on how things proceed, go from there.
Okay, it's on your agenda for next time. Next one is, oh, that's okay. The next one is the naming of a private driveway. The actual road names, just, you understand. An old subdivision on East Falkhill Road needs a private road name, approved by the town. We approve all road names, private or public. So house numbers and building permits can be issued to the parcel owners. So that's what this is all about. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approve resolution of twenty eighteen titled Town Road Name for E nine one one for forever Ivy Lane. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is the Wallock, it's something, the famous.
Yeah.
Something, yes.
Very old subdivision.
God, is it ever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's carried, okay. Okay, the next one is approval for me to go to permit and NYMER training. Both of these are essentially no expense to the town. I make a motion that the town board approves Supervisor Oberly going to permit annual training in Albany. No, Bolton Land, not train, it's not in Albany. Training at no cost to the town. And the permit annual meeting is May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at Bolton Landing. Is there a second?
Both of these are no cost, you said?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Okay. The next one is for NYMER. It says, I make a motion that the town board approves Supervisor Oberly going to NYMER annual training in Albany at no cost to the town. The NYMER annual meeting is May tenth and eleventh at Bolton Landing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Next one here is going out for macadamming using SAM grant funds. SAM is the name of a New York State grant program. It has more words than I care to mention. We finally got approval from New York State to spend funds to macadam the parking areas, walkways and driveway at the town complex. This motion is to start the bidding process for that construction. So that's what this is about, these paths coming into this building and out in the front here, that kind of stuff. I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board authorizes the town clerk to advertise for sealed bids for macadam of the town complex using SAM grant funds. Bid package are available March twenty-ninth. The bids must be returned by ten fifteen AM on April twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, opened at ten thirty AM on that date. The bid will be awarded on May eighth, twenty eighteen, at the regular town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now, there's a, a second one, using the same money. I had two projects and one grant. We finally got approval from New York State to spend funds to repair the highway garage, big doors, you know, the big ones where the trucks go in. They got beat up quite a bit. This motion is to start the bidding process for that repair. I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board authorizes the town clerk to advertise for sealed bids for repair of big highway garage doors using SAM grant funds. Bid packages are available March twenty-ninth. The bids must be returned by ten fifteen AM on April twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, opened at ten forty-five AM on that date. The bid will be awarded on May eighth, twenty eighteen, at the regular town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this the same application or two separate?
No, it's one grant with two projects.
Okay, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, the generator thing. Okay, it's a little complicated. Let me go through it so you can all be brought up to date. As you are aware, the town hall complex, that's a set of buildings here, was without electricity during the first big snowstorm starting on Friday, March second, and was turned on Monday, March fifth. During this time, there was limited operation at the highway garage with their small generator. There was no heat, water, internet or telephone services or electricity, so I closed the town hall for those days. I tried three times in the past to get a grant to cover the purchase of a hundred and fifty KW standby generator to power the whole town complex when needed. The current plan is to go for a shared services grant this summer. If that fails, to see if New York State Senator Serino can give us a grant. She gave us the SAM grant. Our, all failing to put its purchase and installation on the twenty nineteen budget. The estimated cost is about ninety thousand dollars. That's installation, generator, wires in the ground, a lot of stuff. The timeline for the twenty eighteen shared services will be similar to last year with applications being released in early April, which is next month, due back mid-May and a project start August first. With this tight schedule, I request to use Whitman Engineering to do the design work, the bidding process to oversee the construction and doing the cost estimating. It was used for earlier estimates. We never had a project, so couldn't do the rest of it, just estimates. With the short time to repair the shared services grant proposal, I request permission to use its services again to do the proposal and to be reused for another Senator Serino grant or in the twenty nineteen budget. So we'll get three possibilities of use of it. I will get a contract for approval at the April tenth town board meeting or earlier so we can move ahead and not miss the shared services deadlines. Since we have about a month from application being available to submission at deadline, we got to work very quickly because he's got to do a lot of engineering and stuff. So what I'm doing is I'm asking, I'm putting a motion here in place saying that the town board, board authorizes a town supervisor to start preliminary design and cost estimates for the town complex generator with Whitman Engineering. A contract will be provided for approval at the April tenth town board meeting or earlier. Is there a second?
I have a question.
Oh, you got a second.
Well, I, I don't have a second yet, I have a question.
Oh, okay, we'll answer the question.
Shared services for me are, you can put something, I, I'm not understanding how this could be shared services.
Yeah, how do you share a generator? How do you share a generator?
How do you share a generator, especially one of that size?
There, there is a, a condition or a capability of having it for very specialized, unique situations like this.
Yeah.
It's not a shared, it's not shared that Mylan and Pleasant Valley work with us. But it can be done. I'm going for it. I'm hoping that County Executive Molinaro will approve it. I mean, he's the ultimate approver.
Okay.
Because he's been involved with me, understanding that we had no electricity for three, four days here. And he couldn't get a hold of it.
So this is some caveat that goes in.
This is special category that's in there.
So it's share, it's share services money, but it's not a shared generator.
No, it's not a shared generator.
Right.
Okay. Problem is, as I mentioned before, I mean, the times that we use that generator is once every five years maybe. I mean, ninety thousand dollars could buy us a lot of solar panels, which would give us internet or electric on an ongoing basis and save us a lot of money. I would rather see ninety thousand dollars go towards a solar panel.
We did have, you, you did put in a grant for, right?
We put in for a sixty thousand dollar generator and, and the difference of, of solar panels, but we were turned down.
It didn't go.
Turned down, but we also have solar panels and another grant with Didi Barrett, Assemblywoman Didi Barrett. And I'm waiting to get the answer back on that, that's sixty-four panels.
They just fit in there. I see ninety thousand dollars being more wisely spent on solar panels than I, than I do on a generator.
Wow.
And the four days that we were out were Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, of which Monday was the only day that we would have worked, so.
Coincidental.
What, how much does it cost to, to hire this company to do the, the proposal? You said Whitman Engineering or?
Well, that's what I'm trying.
Yeah, how much does that cost?
Well, the total thing might be eight, nine thousand.
So we had.
That's the whole bidding and everything else.
Whether we get it or not.
Well, no, if we don't get it, we don't pay the whole bill. I don't know what that piece is yet.
How much does it cost to have them design and engineer and tell us like what we need?
Right.
I don't know, I don't have that number yet. I mean, I didn't know this until like a couple days ago, of what the deadline was, and I didn't realize it was this quick.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we miss the window, we don't get it, that's all. It's a lot of work that's got to be done. It's a lot of work that's got to be done. So, I'm offering a solution to the problem. I know we don't often, but there are many times on the weekends and stuff when the electric goes out and we have to go and re-initiate a lot of the computer stuff, the things to make them work and get them back on schedule. The library goes dead because they're here on Saturdays and they, their program stops. Occasionally, they have Sunday programs. We could have a Sunday activity here, too. I mean, just because, following Dean's suggestion, then you and I should never buy house insurance or car insurance because you only use it once and you may never use it in your whole lifetime.
Well, when people have that option, they can choose not to, but the state regulates and the mortgage company requires that you have both of those things, so you don't have that privilege. But those that do have that privilege probably do self-insure.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Can we find out how much it would cost to do the legwork before we actually make a decision about whether we want to do it?
Well, which means, you know, we stop everything for a month unless we have a separate meeting.
Fine with me. I mean, it's up to, it's okay with me. It doesn't, if we're undecided about even doing this at all, why put any money into the upfront?
If you don't want.
And then decide not to do it.
I would say find out what the. Why can't we use the old report?
The parameters are before we go ahead and make that decision.
Two years old and stuff, the prices are going up.
It could get at least a jumpstart on whatever approvals that you're looking for.
But it's not broken down in pieces. That's my, that's my problem at that time. He did it free at that time. This is looking for a more intensive thing.
I think we need to know better what we're voting on before we do it, though. I mean, that would be my field.
Okay, well, delay it till next month.
I mean, if you want to have a special meeting.
Yeah, I'm one.
I can do a special meeting. It's just, you know.
Delay for special meeting.
My schedule is not that busy, but I couldn't do it. Yeah, I've got all the time in the world.
I don't.
You're the busy guy, don't I say?
Okay, so, let's see. We have that. We have a second?
You had a motion, no second.
No second?
Yeah, no second.
Okay, so then we can just leave. Yeah, it just dies. I just wanted to be sure I didn't leave a loose end for you. Okay, you're next.
Several years ago, the library, well, the town had offices downstairs that they vacated, and there was a lot of empty space, and they offered it to the library. So, the library set up the children's reading room down there, and there's an office that's available for public use. There's a storage room for the library. But that was never incorporated into the lease that the library has with the town, and it's been several years. So, I worked with the town attorney, and we updated the lease and amended it to include those spaces. The library trustees are in agreement with it, and this is a motion to authorize our town supervisor to sign the lease. So, I make a motion to approve the following, be it resolved that the town board approved the agreement to modify the amended extension agreement between the Town of Clinton and the Clinton Community Library, that the town supervisor of the Town of Clinton be and he hereby is authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the attached modification agreement and to take any and all actions necessary to implement the provisions of said modification agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, so, going back on the history of why we even moved the town offices out of the basement was because we had a problem. There was wetness, mold, all these other reasons. So, originally, the library was just using that for storage, and we had no problem with it. I still have no problem with it. But if we sign a lease that says now we're renting this space, whether it be for free or not, we now become responsible for that space to make sure that it's a good, healthy environment for people to stay in there. Well, I have no problem with the current use, the way it is. Signing this lease, to me, obligates us to constantly be on the hook for whatever problems that basement has. Now, we did do some drainage and everything else, but the problem why we took all these offices out of the basement and we put up those buildings was solely for the fact of getting people out of the basement. And I find that as a liability to now sign a lease to anybody to use that basement.
Is it not a liability to have them using the space without an agreement?
Well, we can easily put up a sign saying you can't use it anymore, but we have a lease, then we're obligated to go and remedy.
The library in the lease, the library is required to have insurance at least, and that covers that space.
And were all those things fixed?
As a landlord, we would be responsible whether.
Well, we are anyway.
A tenant has an insurance policy. It's usually the tenant's liability that the tenant's policy is covering. This would be our liability for renting a space that would not be habitable.
So, what would we have to do?
Well, I'm just saying that that basement has been a problem for years, and that's the reason we took people out of the basement. If we leave it the way it is, where you could use it, but if it's not habitable, we're not going to be obligated to maintain it. At least, we're not going to be on the hook. That's my problem.
It's our building, it's our building, whether the library uses it or not, if we've got mold, if we've got something else, we're gonna, we're on the hook to fix it.
You're having people go down there into the plan fleet room for events all the time that have nothing to do with the library.
There's a difference between continual exposure and everything else. And again, it's the difference between putting up a sign saying, hey, we can't use this until we fix it and we can figure out the budget versus being forced to have to fix it immediately. I just see it as an exposure. I have no problem with the library using it the way they have been using it, but now obligating us through a lease, I think it's a liability.
Did this come up when you spoke with Shane about it? Did he raise this issue?
No, he didn't raise this issue.
Shane wasn't really involved back then either. He didn't.
Shane looked at the original lease, he asked for the square footage.
I'm saying Shane wasn't involved. It was Don and his other partner that dealt with things back then. So, Shane may not be up to speed as to why we even moved everybody out of the basement.
But in terms of this contract.
Well, the contract probably is legal.
And he didn't say anything. He didn't raise that concern.
The contract's not that it's not legal. I'm just showing that the, there is an exposure that we take on this extra liability. And while, again, I'm not opposed to anybody using it, and in fact, I love seeing our properties being used, it does like, put us in a liability. Coming from an insurance perspective, that's what I look at.
I respect, but I think the town has that liability anyway.
Well, we do, but we wouldn't necessarily be obligated to fix it right away, where if we had a lease, then we would be obligated immediately to remedy.
So, you have a motion and a second on the table.
I second it.
Yeah, I know it's been seconded.
Werner seconded it.
All right, okay. So, we need to vote.
Right, let's do a vote. Nancy?
Yay.
Dean?
Nay.
Ray, yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Nay.
Motion passed. Still looking at that with Shane about that issue. So, we're prepared. Okay, the next one is Taconic Little League Request for Signs at Park. You all seen the sign that we were talking about? She brought it up. You all got a packet of information and all. Is there any discussion you want to make beforehand before we get into the actual motion?
Well, you said it came up before, so why don't you discuss what came up before?
Oh, it came up before, I'll say 20 years ago, something like that. I forget exactly. And the town board at that time, on the same kind of issue, signs at Friends Park on the fence outside of the ball field there, said no at that time. That's all they said, and that was the end of the issue. There was nothing else said. So, that's what, that's what happened then. So, at that point, I said, well, we got a new board. Let's fly it and see what happens this year.
Right, but Dan Harkenreider, the rec chair, has been asking to do the same thing, to raise money for the town park itself and to upgrade the facilities. And so, we've told him no over the years, so how could we tell our own rec committee no and then turn around and let someone else do it? I mean, that's kind of like self-defeating, and it's, it's a matter of whether we want signs or not, and if we do, then we should at least give the rec committee an opportunity to do it.
Well, as I said before, in an email to you all, that every year, we do the budget process, ask for suggestions, projects, whatever you want, pay increases, more paper, whatever it is. And we haven't had a specific request for improvements beyond the community development block grant at the rec park, Franck Rec Park. Now, that's, having said that, the only reason we could get the community development block grants there is they're all predicated on census blocks. Census blocks are little pieces of property, crazy shapes, that have certain populations and certain economic wealth in those blocks. The blocks are essentially, the one that, the only one we, big block when you add them all together. The only one we have comes up basically Center Road to down here, Fiddler's Bridge, goes out Fiddler's Bridge, goes down Quaker Lane, and comes across Falkhill. So, the only thing that we could have a activity in making projects or whatever is Franck Park.
That's for, that's for grants.
That's for community development block grant. In the past, in the 90s, I got lots of grants, and that's how most of the work was done over in Friends Park. For some reason, it's not within the allowed zone, okay? So, there are others, grants that can be obtained, but you know, you've got to have a project, and you've got to decide what you want to do. So, we could put money in the budget, but we never were asked to put any budget in the budget. I don't make up all the activities in town. I try to do a lot of them.
So, when we have subdivisions, monies are put into.
That's right.
Yep. So, monies are put into our recreations, but real estate development's not going on, so we're not really getting much money.
That's right.
Putting in, and we've spent a lot of money in recent days upgrading, which we should, upgrading our parks. We've also mentioned that we should upgrade the roofs on the dugouts, the dugouts themselves, the fencing and so on. And I also said, again, another liability is the, the old tennis court on that Friends Park is heaved, and someone's going to trip and fall. And I'd rather see it either bulldozed over or repaired and replaced. And so, I've expressed that we should be putting money into that as well. So, there is monies that we need to do in upgrading that park.
All we need to do is identify.
It's just not available for grants, so we've been waiting for grants, but it's not going to happen.
I take issue on the budget thing. We worked very hard to keep the budget down this year, to work within the parameters so that we didn't have to raise taxes, et cetera. So, there were no requests for Friends because of that, all right? But there is a great need, and we are going to come back with requests that will come out of the fund we're talking about as opposed to the budget, which would have hit the tax base, all right? So, it's not that there isn't a need, it's just that the need wasn't appropriate to put in the budget, and I don't believe he would have approved it anyway. So, okay.
It's not just me that approves it. It's all five of us that approve the budget.
I know, I know.
One person budget approval.
This request comes from the Little League.
We're getting off track here.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. So, the money goes to, whatever money gets made goes to the Little League.
Right.
It's not to the town. So, there's no money available to upgrade anything?
Well, that's what I'm saying is that if.
So, that's a meat point.
We haven't allowed Dan Harkenreider to put, to sell the advertising space because we said we didn't want signage all over the town.
But that's, that's a different, in that case, the town is selling the space, not the Little League.
Right.
Right.
But we've said that we didn't want signage on fencing, period. So, whether it's Dan or it's the Conic Little League, we've just said no over the years to both. And, and so, if we're going to approve one over the other, I would find it kind of strange that we would not allow our own park director that opportunity before we gave it to anybody else, is all I'm saying.
Okay, I got you.
So, what can we do? More discussion? Okay, I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the Conic Little League's request for banner-sponsored signs to be displayed at Friends Park annually from October, I mean, April to October for fundraising purposes. It'll be a roll call vote. Nancy?
A second.
Oh, need a second, right. Any second?
Second.
Okay, Nancy seconds. Okay, Nancy, yes or no?
Nay.
Nay? Okay.
Um, nay.
Ray, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Any other items?
Yeah, we didn't have the PVE thing, the letter on the agenda. So, I attended the Wapender Creek Watershed and municipal council meeting in February, and one of the presentations there is PVE LLC, an engineering firm out of Poughkeepsie, that is trying to get a grant to do a flood mitigation study along the entire Wapender Creek watershed. So, it not only involves Clinton, it involves many towns throughout Dutchess County. Entire watershed is contained within Dutchess County. And they were just asking for letters of support from town boards and from CACs throughout the county in support of their grant. The grant is from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and what is the other one? The NEIW PCC, New England. I don't know what it all stands for. But, so, we wrote a letter, the town offering support, oh, it's the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission. But, so, I wrote a letter that I passed around to everybody in support of their proposal to get the grant, and if they get it, you know, they can, it will give us ideas of where we are at risk in town, where private property may be at risk, or where our own town facilities may be at risk of flooding, and methods that we can, or solutions that we can approach to solve the problem instead of just guessing. We'd have experts telling us, and it would not cost us any money if they get the project done, so.
Just to make a comment, about 15, 20 years ago, I've been heavily involved even when this organization started in the 90s, and they had the core engineers do a similar study. Not quite, I think, in the exact detail like they're doing here, but very similar because they had big flooding conditions primarily in La Grange, and that area wiped out a whole rec park. Pleasant Valley is always getting out of the town hall because it floods and stuff. So, I think it's good to do another one because in that period of time, water flows change, paved surfaces change, creeks get dammed up from debris and stuff, so I support this. But I just wanted to say, a prior one has been done sometime ago.
Yeah. So, do, make a motion for this?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve a letter of support from the Town Board of Clinton to PVE LLC for their proposed watershed and flood mitigation assessment grant.
Second. Any? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
I did want to bring up one thing. Back last year, we talked about possibly getting a trailer speed monitoring system. You see them on the road where it tells you how fast you're going, and we decided to table that for a while. Sarin Tompkins and I have been working on this. I'm just bringing it up for discussion tonight. We did look at bids, not, well, we looked at pricing, and we found a very reliable organization that will give us this at about $3,000 to $4,000 less than what we originally talked about last year. And the justification for this, I want the board to at least think about this, is we really don't have a police force here. We don't have a way to enforce the speed. Getting, we're getting a lot of, I am, a lot of complaints about speed on some of our Getting, we're getting a lot of, I am, a lot of complaints about speed on some of our town roads. I, I, I'm going to bring this up at the next meeting. I will give, uh, the board the three quotes that we have. Um, I seriously would like to have this pass so we can purchase this. This particular one is a little over $6,000, which is considerably cheaper than the ones that we had considered last year. If we could work with the sheriff's office in concert so that it registers speed at certain days, whatever. So the sheriff could actually monitor at that time the speed and do something about it. Uh, I think it would help.
Well, the sheriff's department has one. Have we looked into having them?
We really don't have access to that. I mean, I already talked to one of the lieutenants in the sheriff's office and they, they, we can't loan it out to us for any particular length of time.
Well, a link of time, yeah.
One of the, one of the reasons this came up was that I also had received a complaint from a resident on Lake Drive. And they said that they, we've used the sheriff's one in the past and it, while it was there for the three days, everything was great and they loved it. Uh, but it goes away and it's a big county. So the sheriffs want to use it everywhere and they're not just going to, if we have one available to us, we can put it in targeted areas when we need it.
Yeah.
Well, and for instance, we, we, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have a request into the county for the rest of that section of, uh, Salt Point Turnpike to reduce the speed from 40 to 30?
It was rejected.
And that never really got?
Yeah, it went to the whole process and it was rejected.
It was rejected.
It was rejected. Okay. So that's even, in my opinion, that is a really, an area from stores to the post office there. I think, you know, those kinds of things, if we have our own, we can, you know, put them where they're needed and hopefully get people to become a little more aware of the speeding and someone is really.
The model that you're referring to, does it, has it, is one that has a camera or not to take pictures?
No, no. I, I looked into that and I talked, I talked to the sheriff. First of all, it's very expensive. Secondly, you have no way to prosecute someone with a camera. You don't know who was driving that vehicle, whatever. This just gives us the ability to know the timeframes that people come through there, the, the exposure for speeding and to help deter, you know, speeders.
And I think we should be in the, we should be in the business of just trying to make things safe, not trying to prosecute people.
Right. We had a problem if we try anyway.
Yes.
So, um, I'm proposing that we talk about this next meeting. I will give everybody the information.
Yeah, as I told you privately earlier, that it's a money issue, too. How does it fit within the highway budget?
And I, I still think it's capital, but we can, that's why we're, that's why we're not voting on it tonight.
Still highway budget. Capital is highway budget.
Okay.
It's a different category, but it's still highway.
Okay, we can talk about the fund. Okay?
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, we'll go into appointments. I make a motion that the town board appoints Chris Giuliani, Giuliano, as a member of the ZBA for a term of office from March 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2024, a full-term vacancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That, that motion carried. Next one is I make a motion to appoint Gene McAvoy as a member of the CAC for a term of office from March 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Any mo, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of warrants.
I make a motion, be resolved the town board approves the March General Fund warrant vouchers number 69 through 104A through F totaling $28,648.86. And the March Highway Fund warrant vouchers number 39 through 70A totaling $139,935.58. Is there a second?
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We're not going to move funds. Supervisors report, the February 2018 supervisors' report will be approved when the 2017 books are reconciled. So in other words, you gotta finish up the end date and then you can update everything from there. So we're not having that. Is there any public discussion that's going to be wanted at this time? Okay, hold on. I make a motion to open the meeting to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. So the same rules, name, street.
Denise Berry, Hollow Road. I just wanted to make a comment about the cost of summer camp. I received conflicting information about the cost than what you said. So I just want to put it out. I don't want anybody to hold you, hold you to that figure. We'll give that information as it comes. I think we need to check on what those costs and fees for summer camp are going to be.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I make a motion to re.
This gentleman wants to say.
Which guy? Oh, you can't put your hand up.
Sorry, sir.
I have a question about the, uh, and I don't know if you can answer this at this time. It's just something that came to mind. Uh, with the speed monitoring, I'm wondering if the data stamps from that device, if that, if that information is collected at high, like at points of, let's say, the day when we know speeding is really up. I'm not, I'm wondering if the sheriff could potentially be alerted to that on, you know, in future months or weeks or whatnot to possibly address that. Or if nothing else, then the town does know that consistently on this road, people are going 25 miles over the speed limit all the time. You know, that would be useful information. That's just it.
That does that.
I'm just curious about that. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Larry Hopkins, Highway Superintendent. I worked in the past to answer a few of your questions on, um, speed control. We did get it from the sheriffs a few times, but they need it, we need it, we wanted it. And going down to Kipsey to get it was kind of a, just didn't work. Uh, we had a guy that lived in Town Clinton, so it kind of had a little, but he moved. So, um, that's why we don't get it there too much. They only have a couple. It's not as easy as you think, just to go get theirs. So, uh, we had proposed that a few years ago to go get it and buy our own type thing and eventually over the years it just kind of slacked down. We can move it around ourselves and we know, and I have a good rapport with the sheriff. So all we do is walk over there and tell him, I got a little piece of paper saying every day, and it happened right on Carol's Road, every day this guy goes by at 3:30, at 8:00, every single day. You know, we walk over there and tell him, if he has the time, he's not obligated to do this, but you talk to him, they'll go down to that road and they'll sit there, if they can, at 3 o'clock or 3:30. We had a problem on, um, Creek Road, too, same way. Children coming down, waiting on the bus every day at 8 o'clock. Those cars would go flying. We'd go over and talk to them. They make their point to go over there if they can and sit there at 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock when the buses go through. So we have a capability of working with them if we had one here more often. And it does, as your question does, it does tell you times, dates. It's a more computer than I am, but you can plug it in and, uh, my car's very good at that. So it tells you almost everything, what time of day, how fast they were going, how many cars on that road. So it, it's a very, um, good piece of equipment and, uh, I think in the mo, we need to talk about the money, so that's a good reason that we can.
Well, wouldn't it make more sense to have like a shared service?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't it make sense to have like a shared service?
No, I talked to the other count, other towns. They really didn't care.
No?
No, they didn't, um.
We did that about three years ago.
Yeah, and nobody seemed like that.
Because I tried to pass it on.
They just don't want to buy one. You know, that's about mine. You don't want to pay. And some of the towns, like Linebacken, will have their own from their own police agency. So they don't need one. And Red Hook's the same thing. So we're talking Mile and Pine Plains. I don't know if Pine Plains, they have their own police, too. So they may not need one there, so it's, it's very limited as to who you can share with.
So when the discussion comes or whatever for the money, I like, we get involved, obviously. You're thinking highway and I didn't put in my budget because it wasn't an issue at that time. So we could work around that somehow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarin. Any more? Okay, I make a motion and to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any more business before the town? I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.